Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for the Newburyport Public Schools for Monday, May 7, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Tocanta?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hawke Tyson?
Here.
Mr. Riden?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
All present. Thank you. Stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose love there is liberty and justice for all.
Go Celtics!
They're up by one. End of the first quarter.
Thank you. What a game.
You're like psychic, right? You're psychic.
He's got a little window over there. He's going to keep giving us updates during...
Very focused on what we're doing.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Do we have warrants?
Yes, we have warrants. Okay, first warrant. I move that the following name bills and payrolls for the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $12,931.49 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the following name bills for the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $48,695.58 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
The first set of minutes are the superintendent interview on 3:19. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Second set of minutes for the April 24 business meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think Jake's not... Jake sitting on the audience?
No, I don't think so.
Is there public comment?
Oh, yeah, we have public comment. That's right. Yeah, it's not on the agenda. Okay. I'm sorry. We have a period of public comment here. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to come up and share some thoughts with the school committee. If you could identify yourself and try to hold on to about two minutes of time, we would appreciate it. Anybody interested in making public comment? Seeing none, and seeing the Newburyport High School representative is not here, we'll move to item number five on the agenda, awarding the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Certificate of Academic Excellence. And I would turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Margaret, I would like you to come up here and join me for a minute. And I'm glad you brought a support section tonight. That's really nice to see. I want to tell the school committee a little bit about Margaret. Every year, I get to give out one award as part of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And Margaret was my choice this year. And I'm going to share with you some of the things that I have learned about Margaret and some of the things that have been told to me that describe Margaret. She brings people together. She has an unparalleled work ethic. She is a leader of students. She's versed in the discipline of deliberate practice. That one sent me back when I read that. She's tenacious. She is a gifted scholar. She takes an active role in shaping her own future. She's played three sports. And oh, did I mention she's also a valedictorian? So it gives me great pleasure, and I would just like to read this. And while this says Certificate of Academic Excellence, this award for me personally is so much more than just the academic piece. It's about being the leader. It's about being an amazing human being at her age. Says Margaret F. Cody, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence in witness hereof the seal of the association and the signature of the superintendent of schools. Congratulations. And you know nothing about that, but I just... We're so delighted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do you find her own sharing second? Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I complimented her on that. Five inch heels, because she would have towered over me when I have been at other events with her. She's had on five inch heels.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the FY18 schools' capital projects. Again, I would turn it over to the superintendent.
Steve is here. Steve, come on up. Grab a chair and come on. We're joined. Mayor Holliday, you want to do any kind of an introduction to this?
Sure. We... Nine years ago, it became really, really important to my administration and the city to begin putting together a workable five-year plan that we can begin to address. Just amazing list of capital needs, capital projects, building projects, equipment, vehicles, IT. The list was enormous, and we have made tremendous progress in terms of being able to advance many of these longstanding needs for years. So the five-year plan was updated and submitted to the council per the charter, which actually... It was included in the new charter that there has to be a capital plan, which I think was great to actually put that in the document so that we every year have to be working on our capital needs. It was also an area that we received the Commonwealth Compact Grant for help with funding our capital needs. And so that was very helpful in terms of working with DOR on that particular piece. So we have put together the five-year plan, and the city council had a hearing a couple weeks ago on the plan. And when we adjust the charter, it makes more sense that the hearing happened on the... When we present the FY18 projects as opposed to a five-year plan, which really is aspirational. And what we do is pull out things that we are able to fund. And working with the school committee and the city council on joint ed, there was a request that the... From the council, that the school committee... Because this is the first time we've actually had a formal vote on the projects, which makes sense. And I don't know why we haven't done that in the past, but it seems to make sense that we approve the FY18 capital plan. That is going in as part of a larger document with all of the FY18 projects to the city council with the budget on Monday, the 14th. So that's where we are. The money that we are able to address the school capital needs this year is significant because we're tapping into the school project balance that was... That's left there. So you received a document from Kathy Manning as part of your budget with the capital plan. So I guess the best place is just to start from the top and walk through them and see if there's questions. Does that make sense?
Yes. Good. The first item is the high school oil and brick work. Do people need additional information on that? The high school concrete and sidewalk repairs. Any additional questions or comments? The Knott Mullen parking lot repaving and lighting improvements? I have lots of comments, but I have no need for additional information. I have experience.
This is one that's going to take effort on the part of the school committee to work with the city council on this one. As you remember, they pushed it back last year, and, you know, this is money that we identified in the Knott Mullen project for this project. And, you know, we really need to unite and advocate stronger for this. There's a couple councils who really don't see the need for the lot to be redone.
I would love to have this happen while I'm still here, too, having the history of this, so if we can...
Come here. Is it possible to invite those members of the city council to join us on a van ride around the parking lot? That might...
It has to be in the evening when it's dark, because I want them to see how poorly it's lit.
So we just have to do a lot of advocates for this. I mean, again, this was money that was identified before many of these projects as part of the Knott Mullen project, and we just never got to it because there was questions about the solar canopy and lighting and any... But, you know, we need to move forward. The money's here. Let's get it done. So...
The next item is the high school front walkway extension. We have talked about that. Does anybody feel like they need additional information? High school computer upgrade. We've also talked about that.
I just had a question on this one, Susan. We do have the additional support coming from the NEF here, right? Or is this all... It just...
So yes and no. If we are having additional support from NEF, it will be because they will not be doing some of the STEM. They'll be diverting funds from the STEM program. NEF allocations has looked at this, but in order for them to contribute to any part of this, they would be diverting what they had planned to do for STEM.
And your priority would be to fund the computer upgrade and the high school projector upgrade from this account?
Yes.
And use this here and let NEF focus on STEM?
Yes.
Okay.
High school projector upgrade, I had a question. Does anybody else have a question? How... Are we sort of locked into these projectors since we've just discovered some interesting new technology? Is it possible to explore that as well? I ask.
I mean, we have recently gone out to bid for these. So, I mean, we're not locked in. When you go out to bid, you're not locked in, but...
I would just encourage you to research. Here's a little doodad.
So I guess the question is like... I don't remember talking about the unit specifically, like what it is they loved about that one. I don't know what the... Well, I know the short throw, but there were probably a dozen companies that make short throws or make things that can put the image up on the... Because we're not buying... It's not like a Mimio or a Smartboard attached, so it's just a projector. So, you know, I'm assuming that you guys did your homework and put everything out to bid and got a best price for the adequate product.
We don't have the bids back yet. They're out to bid right now.
So that you're looking for the best price for the adequate product? Not the Lamborghini, but the reliable Ford that we...
Absolutely.
All of us? And still get to work.
Yes.
Yeah. Fantastic.
Next item is the Knott walkway sidewalk repairs and repaving. Any question about that? Next one... Next item is the high school masonry repairs. Does anybody have any questions about those?
Actually, I'm sorry. I have a question about the Knott sidewalk part. I was reading the part with the fire road. When we talked about expanding the skate park a couple of years ago, one of the things the fire marshal said was that, you know, in the back, how the asphalt stops? And there's just grass, like the fire road and sidewalk don't attach.
Yeah.
So would that include extending that asphalt along the back wall of the school to meet up with the fire road or not? Or just repair to the existing road itself, not the sidewalk part?
No. What we'd have to do first is evaluate all of the sidewalks. I mean, this amount of money's not going to do that whole...
Right. So this is primarily just the road itself?
It may... You know, when we look at it, it might not even be the road. It might be just a portion of the road. It might be the sidewalk coming in from Johnson Street. It might be the sidewalk coming down from Summit Place. It's a matter of going out and...
I hope that one doesn't need to be redone. It's branded.
Well, the...
The ramp and everything that comes down?
The ramps are all new, but the asphalt, some existing asphalt, they're almost redone. So we've got to evaluate which... What area is going to be the priority that we can get done with this amount of money?
But Steve, I just would also remind everyone that the Safe Foods to School grant for 1.3 million is focused on Knott Mullen and looking at Johnson and High and some of the top ends. So we need to be sure that we don't duplicate efforts here.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with Greg Jones on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions on the proposal?
Yeah, I have one. Steve? Yeah. Not on here, and I know we've done some work to rectify the situation with the high school roof, but where do you see that fitting in? Whether it be in the next five years or beyond. And I know there's probably going to be some effort to get, you know, through some type of school building program, but where does that stand in respect to capital projects?
Last fall, city council approved $20,000 to use for maintenance and repairs of the roof to kind of buy us a few years to get through while we work with the Mass School Building Authority on getting into their program. So we will be in the next January, February timeframe, we'll be submitting a statement of interest to the MSBA to get into their accelerated repair program. And hopefully, within a couple of years of that point, we'll be able to replace those roofs.
Thank you.
Where the roofs need to be replaced, is that a different section than where the science labs are being identified?
Yes.
Okay. Because I just want to be sure that we don't go to the MSBA, get money to repair the roof, and then rip it all out because we're going to put in science labs. So, okay.
Come on. I'm not going to say a word. Great. I don't think we need to take a vote on this because we weren't voted on this, right?
No, you voted on the five-year plan.
Okay.
These are the specific projects that are going before the city council requesting funding for FY18.
So if... I'm sorry, Mayor. You said one and a half million for the Safe Ways to Schools?
1.3, yeah.
So if we vote on this for these dollar amounts, and then we get 1.3 million dollars...
Over and above that, which is focused on a project in its own zone. And they're going to be doing probably third week in June, a big public meeting to roll out. We've had... Because they've been out looking at the site. They've done the traffic studies, traffic counts. They've looked at the sidewalks. They're talking about putting... They're not... They're beacons now. They're not calling them hot lights, but what's down by Merson would be on the top of Johnson. But I said as long as they have more of the ornamental base, so it matches better on High Street. We've asked that any sidewalks they replace on High Street be done with brick, and that will pay the difference, hopefully, depending on what that comes out to. But they have to do some borings to determine the amount of asphalt that's on some of these sidewalks. So... But the goal is to have High Street sidewalks in brick, and then it would be the cement on the side roads. There'll be bump outs where kids can stand on the corner more safely, waiting to cross. And then they'll have the hot lights that should... Or beacons, whatever they're called, so that should help with some of the issues we've had with traffic guards. And they go off, so unless you're crossing the street, they won't be flashing, you know, like a regular light. So...
That's great.
But we're not sure about one or two yet, but that's, again, another project that will also help in terms of some of the capital needs in and around Knott Mullen.
I move approval of the request for...
FY18.
FY18.
School capital plan?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous in passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
The only thing that's not in this, because it came in so late and it never got into the plan, was the lighting at the high school. So because, you know, that was last meeting and everything was done at that point, and if there's...
Okay.
So we'll deal with that at some other point.
Can I ask a question? So is this going to be discussed at the May 14th city council meeting? Or is it just...
No. It will go to budget and finance with the budget, and then they'll set up times to talk about these. And I would imagine they'd probably coincide some of the review with the budget workshops for that particular department. But they do have to have the capital plan approved by June 1st, so I think they'll be pushing it forward a bit faster, so...
Next item on the agenda is the Chartwell's contract renewal. I would turn this over to the superintendent, Nancy Lysick and Mr. Cole. We did have the draft document in our packets. It would probably help to sort of... Since this has been a topic every year, it would be interesting to hear what's happening in the program now, whether there's been changes and improvements in the program.
But we have a new director, as you know. Pam has applied for a grant this year, and it's a $20,000 grant to replace the steam kettle at the Knott Mullen, and she was awarded that grant. First time we've ever had a grant cafeteria, and it's a large one. We just received the final approval, so that's a plus for us. The financials right now are better than they were last year. We've spent a little less on product, more on labor, naturally. Sold a little less lunches, but we were breaking even as of the last report. We had fallen in the red jacket. We will, I'm sure. I'm not sure by how much. I don't anticipate that'll be any higher than what we budgeted. Pam did do a little investigating on school lunches and what the impact would be if we increased lunch. Not that we're asking to do that next year, we're not, but she did calculate that a 25 cent increase in lunch would make us about $17,000 more. And at the end of this year, it would be projected that with the $15,000 that Chartwell's gives us back, we would probably break even. So it's just, you know, a little added information to think about. Currently, we're in... We have a five-year agreement with Chartwell's that was awarded the contract. They are in one-year increments. DESI requires that you only award one year at a time. They will be entering into the fourth year of their contract for FY19, and they'll have one year left. DESI does require that the school committee take a vote to agree to the one-year renewal each year. We didn't have to in the past, but it is recommended now and required.
I would ask Steve if he has anything additional. It's a topic that he's been very involved with over the years.
Well, pretty much just to echo everything that Ms. Lysick stated, it's encouraging that, you know, the numbers have improved largely the direct cost for this year, year-to-date. Actually, it was August to February, the numbers I have in front of me. Direct costs were actually down 23.22% from this time last year, or as compared to last fiscal year. Meal count's up about 2.7%. Total sales are up about 3%. And again, had some... We've had some really good leadership from the new director, Ms. Pam Keely. And, you know, applying for the grant is really helpful. You know, like anything else, I think if we can get... Just encourage families to get to know some of the things about the food service and the quality of the food and the nutritional value, I think it would really help increase participation. And in the end, if we can get our participation up, it's going to bring, you know, more revenue in, and it's going to help us not take away from other aspects of the school budget as we continue to see improvements here. But we did talk about the status in the last finance subcommittee meeting, and we voted to recommend that we again renew the contract for another year.
Susan, do you have anything you want to add?
No. Set it.
Well, one thing I do want to say is when I say we have new director, I am not diminishing what Sharon, our previous director, did in any way. She did a wonderful job for us with Chartwell's. Pam will continue that good work.
And can I reiterate your comments as well? Sharon did an outstanding job. And also, she had to kind of navigate some of the big changes we had between federal nutrition guidelines, as well as in Massachusetts, the à la carte menu being changed. So things like no more chocolate milk, you know, I think it's like that.
And play with water.
Right, right.
That's an era.
We've had really good leadership from Chartwell's, you know, in our schools.
We did get a whole grain waiver for FY18, and we're applying for another one for FY19. Don't see a problem with it.
What does that mean?
It means that it gives us a little bit of leeway in the whole grains that we have to serve. DESI had such strong requirements, so the waiver gives us a little bit more leeway in that area. I mean, we still have to... We still serve healthy food.
When you say have to serve, you mean like whole grain bun versus like stars?
Like 100% whole grain, and you can back it down a little bit.
And we would want that because?
Well, I think the kids like it better, and it gives us a little bit more of an option with the products. I can get you some further detail on it, what the differences are with using the whole grain versus the waiver, if you'd like, and I can send that out to the school committee.
Sure. Just curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
In general, do we talk a lot about... I mean, I know you said chocolate milk, but that came from outside, not us. But I'm thinking like... And I've always kind of wondered this, but like the idea of selling cookies and ice cream and that sort of stuff that kids like, I don't know if it's always the thing we want to promote. And why is it that we're selling dessert at lunch in general? Like, it's a philosophy. Besides, kids like it. You know, and I know I could try to get my kid to stop buying dessert at lunch, and we've talked about it for years now, but at the end...
I have a similar feeling about the so-called fun lunch. And one of them is nachos, which is not a healthy lunch. I mean, it's like it's chips and cheese, really. Do we have to offer that? I mean, I know it's fun. Again, the kids dig it, but I would never want to see a kid have for lunch a bag of chips with cheese melted on it either.
We don't have to. I'm not sure what the philosophy is behind offering that as an item. It's something I would have to talk to Pam about.
But could we change that? Could this district change it locally, or are we bound by some state type of regulations?
No, we could ask them to explore replacing it. We certainly could ask them to do that.
I say like when our librarians choose what books to go. Like, I'm sure the high school librarian could stock some things that kids would love to read, but we don't because it's not things we would like them reading. Like, do our... Does our cafeteria use the same sort of litmus tests when they choose food to serve?
I don't know that...
And even more stringically, if we looked at it like a curriculum, what are we... What books are we giving out in the classroom? What science materials are we using? What science materials are we using? What projectors are we purchasing? Are we looking at the food we serve as a curriculum?
That's an interesting question. I don't know that Steve or Nancy or myself are qualified.
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think you are.
To answer that, but, you know, what I would suggest, let's invite Pam to come to a meeting and have a conversation with her. She'd be more than willing to do that.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thanks.
I just have one more question because I wasn't, I was away during that budget subcommittee meeting, but page four, the things that were moved, five, six, seven, I think that's it. I'm just curious what they were that were removed. The scholarship, nutrition, environmental grant and financial reconciliation, what were those? Without you having to go into the whole detail, but.
Which page are you on?
It's four, the one, like right at the bottom.
The last one.
The last one.
With the signatures on it.
Number five was deleted and six and seven.
They offered a $1,000 scholarship and that was for the first three years of their contract.
Okay.
The environmental grant, I'd have to look at the detail. I'm not sure what that is. Financial reconciliation, they still provide us with the financials. I get a monthly report with all the detail and everything that's.
So, that's just replaced in a different part of the document?
Yeah, it's just a, it's something that they're not required to do anymore, but I get a P and L every month on that to bounce up to. And the management fee from Chartwell's, the $15,000, comes back to us every year because that's in the contract. If they don't break even, we get that money back.
Thanks.
Let me take a motion so we can move this to vote. Do I have a motion?
So, we move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have additional discussion. We will get the director in here to talk to us about the program.
So, we have a vote before we do that?
Okay, we are.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Six to one. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a school choice update featuring a seat review.
Okay. So, as of today, we have had five applications for grade one. We've had three applications for grade six and we have 18 applications for grade nine.
Say this again, Susan, please. Five for grade one.
Five for grade one, three for grade six and 18 for grade nine. And I spoke with principal parent earlier today and he said that certainly the high school, that if the school committee wanted to accept the 18, you certainly could do that. I'm recommending that you accept all of them. Again, just for the members of the committee, these are applications that we don't get to see ahead of time. We don't know anything about the students that are coming to us and each of the students who comes to us has a price tag of $5,000 that the state pays for each student that comes to us.
The other thing that I would add is that, given that we voted on 15 seats at the high school was the vote we took, any number above 15 would require us to do a lottery, unless we change the number from 15 to 18.
Susan, you said the state pays that 5,000, not the sending district? It's the sending district.
I'm sorry, is that what I, I stand corrected?
Okay, it's the sending district.
Now, there's another stipulation, isn't there, for excessive or high special education costs of.
Yes, there is. And that, that for excessive special education costs, it gets reimbursed at 100%.
So, if a student ends up having to go to, I'm trying to think of the name offhand.
Oh, the district place.
The.
Landmark.
Yes, landmark, then the state pays them if you.
They would pay that, yes.
Or the sending district.
The sending district.
Right.
For the sixth grade, what was the number we approved, sixth grade initially?
Five.
Five.
It was five.
And on three.
So, if we were to accept, if we were to vote to accept all these students, there would be no lottery?
Correct.
We wouldn't have to change the high school number?
Oh, it's a pool in general.
We can vote to accept.
Okay.
All these students.
Okay, yep.
Anybody have any questions? Nancy gone. I was going to say, how does this impact our revenue projection? Is this actually going to increase our revenue projection?
By 130,000.
I think it will, for sure. It will increase our revenue projection, but.
It's 130,000?
Again, the one thing we don't know yet is we don't know if there are students choosing home as well, so that has to be taken into consideration. And we do have students that do choice out, so.
When do we find out that number?
It's really, it comes much closer to the end of the school year, so.
Do they have a limit? Do they have to tell the district by a certain time they're going to choice out?
I don't believe there's any requirement.
For instance, if somebody moves, they move.
Right, mark, well, mark the deadline of the.
And again, you know, I would just remind you that our, our number of students is almost always in flux because we always have a student who will move out, a student who will move in. I mean, much of that happens over the summer because that's when people are trying to move and they're trying to get in before a new school year starts, if they're purchasing a home or they're trying to move to a new district. So, much of that happens, but all during the year, we have students that will get them out too.
Do I have a motion that we accept five students at first grade, three students at sixth grade and 18 students at ninth grade? So, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Sean.
Just a quick question. We had voted, at this point, is the choice registration closed?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not likely to have another two pop out for grade six?
We are not.
At this point?
We might see two more students at grade six, but they wouldn't be coming through choice.
Well, I think that was the grade that you were probably most hesitant on, right? Sixth grade as far as people coming in, so that's.
But we're coming.
Right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Answers unanimously. I guess we turn it over to Angela to discuss STEM updates with us.
Okay.
Is that going to be a presentation?
It is, I hope. We didn't lose our project.
No, they said.
Did they say that we, oh, they lost the remote. That's great. It'll come right back. That's great, thank you. Well, I thought it might be fun for you to receive periodic updates on the STEM work that's underway in the district. So, we're going to profile a couple of projects at the middle school. One is focused on teachers and the other one is focused on a group of students. So, this was the Knott mascot challenge and the objectives behind this was, it was done on one of our release days as part of the professional development for the teachers at the middle school. And they had several objectives. One was community building. Another was to put the teachers in the position of the students when they're faced with a STEM challenge and give them some parameters to work with it with and try to solve a problem. And they wanted the teachers to understand risk-taking, what it felt like to be a little bit uncomfortable in a problem-solving situation. They wanted them to practice how to make their learning visible. And they wanted them to also practice problem-solving collaboratively and the ability to give feedback around that process. So, the challenge was to create a mascot that would represent their team's ideal vision for the Knott community. So, I'll let you turn this on presentation for a bit. So, I'm going to take you through and I'm going to let you see some of their work together. They had some guidelines around this and what they, their parameters were, that they, the object that they designed needed to be moved by Lego robots and Lego robots are used in the Knott curriculum. It had to be visually appealing and communicate to the audience their vision for the Knott community. It had to have at least three moving parts and one of them needed to be battery-operated. It had to be at least three feet tall. It needed to complete a race across the gym floor and it needed to be unveiled with a presentation that creatively introduced the mascot and the vision of the team that would be doing it. Their materials were cardboard, the Maker cards that the school has. The only supplies clearly marked for the project could be used in the art and tech ed classes. And if they had their own supplies that they wanted to add to the project, they could. They took three hours from beginning to end. Brad, our STEM teacher, was available to them, to consult with them as they worked through this process. As you can see, they took it very seriously, a lot of good ideas. And, as you may not get to see, all kinds of graphics are in. Take you right to the race.
Place bets before the.
My son is walking.
As you can see, one of the projects forgot to go wheels on the body. And remember, these are all remotely controlled, so they really are operated through by a robot. I want you to take a close look at this project. I want you to see what's on the front of it. All of them are really struggling. This team has a lot of heart. So, the teachers had an opportunity to debrief this afterwards and really talk about what was the learning experience for them in doing this professional development experience. And some of the things that they had to say were that it forced them to stretch. For some, it was really uncomfortable. It was great to think about the supports that come along with the collaborative process. There was a realization that there are multiple ways to be successful when approaching a problem. They also came to the conclusion that everybody has different strengths and weaknesses. The process allowed the groups to capitalize on one another's strengths. They saw the importance of providing opportunities for students to be the captain of their own ships. They developed an appreciation for engineering and realized that it's fun and it can be accessible to everyone. And all the teachers had an opportunity to reflect on how they might take pieces of this process and apply them to their practice, whatever their content area is that they're teaching. So, that was really exciting because as they moved through this, very shortly after, oh, I skipped a lot of this, very shortly after this presentation, teachers started thinking about STEM a little bit differently. And they thought about how it might apply to another content area. So, this, you are going to see just some pictures that were put together about a group of sixth grade students who had read the book, The Boy Who Harnesses the Wind. And this particular piece of literature focuses on a young man in Africa who creates a wind turbine, turbine. And he has limited materials. The majority of the materials that he builds his turbine from are in a junkyard. And so, there were a group of students who were selected to take part in this independent project where they would mimic the problem that this young man had to solve. And so, they came together and they started to work on this project. So, they started by developing a design. They were given one battery is what they had to start with and a pile of discarded materials that they could work on. And they collaborated. They repurposed. They problem-solved together. They were innovative. And then they started to engineer their prototypes. And it was a really successful day for all, but the exciting part of this was that this stemmed from a line of charts in a social studies class. It was the two coming together and saying, wow, how can we help our students apply some of the things we learned during our workshop in this content area? So, it was a great carryover for this project. And this is the kind of thing that we're seeing happening district-wide. I will, I'll be profiling different, different projects that are happening across the district throughout the year so that you can see some of the good work that's happening. It's really exciting. The kids are super invested. The teachers have a lot of energy around this and it's amazing what they're doing very little. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have about this project.
Did the project end up being on display in the school for other students to see?
You know, I'm not sure. It just happened. So, this particular project just happened. The teachers are on display. They're in the STEM room for the students to see what the teachers came up with. So, those are exhibited there, but this one, I'm not quite sure.
Is this something that all the sixth graders are doing?
This wasn't. This was for, this was actually an opportunity for some students to extend because they were offered this as an extension to work on this independently. And they basically went to the lab and they worked with Mr. Volkes and took on the project.
So, they did this, I'm trying to figure out who initiated. Is this a STEM project?
This was initiated by Mrs. Menasali, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Dollis.
I don't know what subjects those are.
Oh, social studies, math and library.
So, what do you say, extension? I guess I'm sort of.
Was it all the students read the book?
Read the, so all sixth graders read the book?
All the sixth graders had read the book.
Great.
And they followed up with the concepts in the book in social studies and they worked in the book in their ELA class. And then this was an extension from that piece of literature.
Great, thank you.
While I'm here, I also wanted to give you a view of, I talked to you, I'm just going to walk right. I'm just going to walk right into my assistant superintendent's report. And last week I had said that I was going to talk to you a little bit about our ELL camp that we had over April vacation. And I'm just going to show you some images from that. One of the exciting things about the ELL camp that I think I may have mentioned to you was that we did this across communities. So we offered this camp to our English learning students over the April vacation for four days. And all of our ESL teachers participated. Karina also participated in making some of the family connections for this. We worked with, some of Amesbury students came over to participate in camp and we worked with press collaborative around the participation for our students. And we ended up with a total of, I think we had 15 students in the end that participated. And there were two major objectives for this camp. We wanted our ELL students to build stronger relationships with some of their peers. But we really wanted them to be able to understand their sense of place. So they could teach one another about their culture. They could teach one another about where they, where their home country is. But also to understand what they bring to our community in Newbury Court and how they're an important part of that as well. So these are just some pictures showing the students coming together in their morning circle. There were a lot of language activities. So for example, when, they were done in a really fun way. So for example, in this circle, they may have had a beach ball one day. And on the beach ball, it had little phrases written all over it about things that children would like. They would throw the beach ball to somebody. The person would need to say their name and read one of the phrases that was on the ball, like, "I like ice cream" or "I like chocolate ice cream." And then somebody else within the circle would say, "I like that too." And so they'd throw the ball to that person. When that person received the ball, they'd need to say the person's name who threw them the ball and then read the little phrase that was on the ball. And it would continue going around the circle. So it was building community, but at the same time, the students were practicing reading. They were practicing speaking. They were practicing their memory, their, you know, their ability to memorize the names of other people in the group. They started with talking about where everybody was from. They also made cultural boxes where they had taken a shoebox and they made something that represented their home country and shared those and presented those to the other students in the group. They had lots of fun. They spent a couple of days in the STEM lab at the Breznerham, working with some of the equipment there and doing some problem solving together. They made some new friends. You can see they made votes. They spent some time socializing, which is really important. They tested their creations. They had great pride in the things that they accomplished. And they expanded their horizons. It was a great week. We hope to continue it in the future. We hope to expand it. We hope that we may be able to do to include another community as we move forward.
Angela, the Intrage?
We took students from kindergarten through grade six.
And they were all working together?
They were all working together. Our older students were acting as mentors for a lot of what was happening and they really enjoyed that role. I think our youngest student, as you can see her at the end of the table there, I think she had just turned five. She spoke no English at all. She would go over and she would pull on this little girl's sweatshirt here that's in front, who also spoke Chinese. And when we'd ask her a question and she just didn't know what to do with it, she'd just pull on her, on her sweatshirt and she would help her out and translate for her so that she could be a part of things. Oh, we had, I think, seven different languages represented during the camp. And the kids, they just had a great time. The smiles that you saw were on their faces from the time they opened the door until they left. It was really, was really a wonderful experience. And it was a great experience for our teachers too because each of our teachers teach at a different level within the district. So they were all working, you know, in collaboration for the camp. Really pleased.
Is there, have you guys thought about what kind of follow-up to this with this particular cohort of kids? Is there going to be another time for them to get together to do something? If they're building community?
Right. You know, we hope so. We don't have that. We don't have a plan for that yet. The students that are here in Newbury Court are working together all the time in Newbury Court. But for our Amesbury students, you know, we really do hope to continue to collaborate. We're looking at what we're going to be doing over the summer. There might be a possibility for, to bring the students together over the summer. You know, we're, we're going to be running a summer program this summer for our ELL students, our Title I students, some of the other students that have been identified that would benefit from summer programming. That summer programming will focus on literacy as well as science. It will be a combined sort of literacy across a, across a content area. So there may be an opportunity there. We're, we've got several things. You know, one of the other things I was going to talk about was how we were meeting that third goal that we had set for ourselves last year. If you remember, I think Kathy included it in the, in the package. The leadership team last year did a deeper dive into why some of our economically disadvantaged students were not achieving at the same level that, that some of our other students were. So we, this year we've really concentrated on putting some programming together that hopefully will help us close some of that gap. One of the other things we're going to be doing beyond the summer program is to be doing a, a summer reading book program, which is very exciting. We've gotten funding from the NEF, from, from Rotary, from, another company, I just want to make sure I, I say this right. Yes, from Bradford and Bigelow. They are going to do all of our mail-ins and books. And the students who participate in this program get a shock for their books at that time. They pick out the books they're interested in reading over the summer. We package those, send labels to Bradford and Bigelow. And Bradford and Bigelow will mail the students their books every two weeks. So they'll receive a couple of books every two weeks that they get to add to their home library. And, and we just encourage the, our normal process of meeting throughout the summer. We, we did this on a smaller scale last year. And we're happy to say that we saw much less regression with the students who did participate in this program. We're hoping as we continue the program that we're going to see some growth with some of these students as well. But we expanded it right into middle school for the summer. So last year we did just our elementary school, our elementary students. And this year with the additional funding, we're able to expand initiative right from middle school. So we're very excited about that. And I just want to put a plug in for this. During our summer program this summer, we are also going to be collaborating with our neighbor's table. And we are going to pilot a farmer's market for dismissal time once a week in front of the Breznerham at our summer program. And the farmer's market will be open to everyone in the community. It will be free to everyone in the community. And it's part of our effort to work towards good nutrition with Whole Foods and make Whole Foods available to anybody who would like to participate. Some of the things we have. Any questions? Thank you.
Angela, can you bow a little bit into, one of the things I like about this ELL program is the collaboration with another district. Do we have plans to, A, continue to build on that? And B, is that going to happen over the summer or not until next year? And then B, are there any other communities that we have looked at for including in this type of collaboration?
Those are great questions. We, I'll be with the ELL team next week. And that's part of our conversation about what our next steps will be to continue this collaboration. We do hope to only expand this collaboration. One of our goals in our SEI plan for the district would be that we do more and more of regional collaboration. So we're looking at other low incidence districts. Maybe looking at Georgetown or Penticott as well as Amesbury. We can also look at Triton. But we're looking for places that have small populations and students. We've already started some of this work with our adult ed. As you know, we've been offering adult ed classes to the parents of any of our students. We've been offering English adult ed classes. And that organically expanded into the regional community. So the first time that we did that, we only opened it up to Newbury Court parents. And by the second time we ran it, our Newbury Court parents were asking if their friends from the surrounding communities could participate at the discounted rate as well. And we were really excited about that. So we hope to continue that work. We, we, you know, it's one step at a time.
One other question I have. All the pictures were focused on activities within the Breznerham. Did we take advantage of the community as a classroom? I.e. the city, whether Amesbury or Newbury Court, for learning experiences?
We didn't this time. But we had that conversation. I think that's something we'd like to do. That was originally our plan, was that we were going to spend part of the time out in the community. It was just hard with navigating the, the transportation piece and the permissions around taking the children out of the school once we had them there. We thought it was the first time we were running the camp. We wanted to establish trust with all of the families from both of the communities in sending the children to us. And we've definitely had hopes of doing that and being able to get out a little more. We had a plan too that we were bringing in a softball coach one day who was going to teach them how to all play softball. It happened to be the day that we had down cores. And, and so we weren't able to follow through with that. But just some of the summer activities and conditions that they would experience here in town, we wanted to expose them to. But those are great questions. Yes, we hope to expand it further into the community. Any questions?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
I just wanted to just talk a little bit. I know that there was an article in the paper and Mayor Holliday can also chime in. But we had Mara Healy come here to NOK Middle School. And she, we were able to receive a grant that came out of her office to purchase some curriculum that is really, it's called Project Here. And the Attorney General came and actually participated, as did the mayor, and as did I, in the activities that the students took part in. And it was really working with our eighth grade students to get them to be having some very candid conversations about everything from marijuana and alcohol use to drinking and driving, e-cigarettes. And one of the things that, that the students, they were asked these questions in small groups and there were adults in each group as well. And all the students were given the answers at the end of the session. But I wanted you to have an idea of what the questions were that the students were asked. and it really was a very important conversation. One of the things that we were able to do at the end of the discussion was really talk to the Attorney General about how concerned we are as a school, as a school district, about the amount of use of e-cigarettes, in particular something called jeweling that our students are involved in. And she was very candid with us and said, what, what do you think needs to happen? And we said, we think there needs to be a major campaign across the Commonwealth to educate people. The curriculum, this, what you see here is part of the curriculum that we are using for our students at the middle school level. And I can tell you that the sitting and talking with the students, you really get an insight into what their thought process is and what their, I mean, they really very carefully considered the questions that were asked of them. Mayor Holliday, I don't know if you want to jump in and talk about your experience that day?
I thought it was a important workshop. I think it's a good curriculum. This is something that, you know, when we were meeting, you know, with our substance abuse task force and starting to really talk about how we deal with the opioid crisis, one of the things that kept coming up was in order to make a difference, we've got to reach into the middle school age and really have to strengthen what we're doing there. And certainly those who, I think, join Andy Egmont's youth and rep programs that are on the Youth Commission and those who, you know, are actively participating in her asset model and all the positive things that are happening there. But we have a lot of students that we need to reach. And that was really impressive conversations at my table. It really was.
The kids are very, very thoughtful.
Yeah, very thoughtful.
But this is the level of conversation that's, that is being had at the middle school. And Jay Murphy, who is the teacher who leads our curricular efforts in this area, he really does a great job of listening to students and making students feel really comfortable. I happen to be in his classroom again today for a short period of time. And one of the things that I admire about Jay is the fact that all of the students, I think, feel like they can go in and have a conversation with him and feel like they're listened to. One of his greatest moments is he's just an amazing listener and he has a great ability to make students feel really comfortable with him. But I also have, and I, it's a lot of pages. But if you don't know anything about jeweling, I would be happy to send you information on it. This was, I had, had taken part in a webinar. This is from the Public Health Law Center. And they made this available after the presentation. And the statistics in here are just frightening. I mean, when kids are jeweling, they are taking into the, into their bodies the equivalent of hundreds of cigarettes. So you know, the, the generations that we thought we had cured from being addicted to nicotine, we're putting them right back there again. Because this process is so widely...
Really?
Really, really.
Super powerful.
It's, it is.
They're not really regulated. It's not regulated.
And there's weird like, like,
Flavoring.
Well, they're flavored, like these crystals that I was reading, like these nicotine crystals, like they, they compress them and, and then candyfy them, like into this candy flavored stuff.
That's a perfect way to put it, candyfy them. Because that is basically what they do and that's how it sounds.
Susan, can you, can you, yeah, can you send us that?
Can you scan it and put it into a PDF?
Yes, I will. The, the detail that's in here is just phenomenal. And I mean, these, the extremely... And, I mean, these, the extremely high levels of nicotine that these kids are being exposed to, and they don't think that there's anything wrong with it. They don't understand that in a very short period of time, they're going to be addicted to nicotine.
Nobody knows what it is.
No, no. And Juul, that particular brand, if you will, has gone, the use of it by young people has gone up exponentially. So, I'm happy to send that off.
Because it's a brand.
It is a brand, yes. So, that's it. I just, I wanted to make you aware that the Attorney General had come and had participated, and that we had benefited from a grant out of her office. And I think that, you know, we're going to continue as a school district to really try to educate and to try to do a big campaign. Lisa and I had a lot of conversation after this about what needs to happen. And when I met with Sean last week, that was one of the things that I spoke with him about, that that needed to be something that really needed to be followed up on because it's, it's very, very necessary.
If we haven't already done it, can I encourage us to have conversations with educators in Amesbury and Salisbury? We have a unique issue here that other communities don't, and that is that no matter how strictly we regulate what is happening here, all kids have to do is go across the border into Hampshire to get the stuff that they want. So, it's really available. There's that kind of, that opening there. And in my conversations with kids who are vaping, that's where they're going. They're just running right across to Seabrook and to Salisbury, on the other side, to the shops there. And if you drive down one, you'll see there's half a dozen shops that do vaping in a quarter-mile, half a mile plate period.
Are the Juuls at all regulated? Like, are they, is there even an age?
Eighteen.
It's eighteen, but, I mean, kids are also getting it through the mail. They're going online.
Online ordering.
That's legal through the mail?
It's happening. I don't know if it's legal, but it's happening.
Huh.
Legality and use don't necessarily go hand in hand.
You'd figure the post office would be pretty careful about the things they pick up from them.
Just, I think that this is, we should be having conversations with those communities as well as our legislators. Anything additional you want to share with us? If everybody could take out their calendars as supplemental materials for our conversation about retreat dates. We need to find some dates for the school committee retreat for the summer. So, Sean's starts on July 1. I would encourage us to think about not going too far into July before we have a retreat.
Can we try the Friday, either Friday the 13th?
Of June?
July.
I mean, if he's getting married.
Or Friday the 20th, or Friday, one of those Fridays?
Friday the 20th, I'm out of town.
We can do Thursdays.
We've had this conversation before.
How about Thursdays?
What's that?
Thursday the 12th?
Thursday the 12th.
The 10th to the 13th is the superintendent's conference, so Sean will most likely be there.
It's good to know that, okay.
Monday the 16th. Switch to the other side of the week.
Still out that week.
What's that?
You're out that whole week.
Yeah.
You're out that whole week?
Yeah.
Okay, Monday the 23rd?
I won't be here.
How about the first, oh, that's the week of the fourth? Doesn't really matter to me. Friday the 6th?
That's going to be a tough one.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
Or the 9th.
Monday the 9th, the day, that's fine by me. Monday the 9th?
I don't think I can do Monday the 9th. The only trip I'm taking is that, like, working together.
Okay.
But I could do the 10th.
Well, Sean's going to be at the superintendent's conference, the 10th to the 13th, Angela. Okay.
So, if I can just interject something, I know that, Bruce, you've mentioned that, you know, Sean's interested in meeting with everybody. So, would it make sense to maybe get some of that done in July and maybe shoot for August, given the difficulty here determining the July date at this point?
Let's talk about it August 8.
August 3?
Friday, August 3 looks really good to me.
I do like your idea, though, Steve, if we could try to meet with him individually throughout July at our.
That's his plan.
That's his plan, yeah. I'll be in touch with you.
Friday, August 3?
Looks really good to me.
Works for me.
Taking homecoming, trying to think.
I mean, what time are you planning on doing?
Summer retreat's usually like 8:30 to 3:00 or something like that.
Like I said, I usually work Friday nights, but.
Right. We're good.
I think we should go to work with Sean Friday night for, we can go there for, after retreat, retreat. Friday, August 3.
We started this before, but if anybody has topics that they're interested in us covering during the retreat, please forward them to me.
We have to do all that stuff we're supposed to do in January, right?
Yes. We have to go over our rules, we have to go over all kinds of stuff.
So, is the agenda for January that we ever had part of this, or do we start from zero?
Could be part of it.
Yeah, could be part of it. But I imagine there's more stuff to talk about now.
Later start times definitely should be on the new version of the agenda.
Sure.
I think in general, it's what Steve was saying last week about goals for the year, or priorities.
Priorities.
Priorities. As yet to be defined.
Okay, well, just continue to send them to me. We'll put it together.
Okay.
Where is there?
Subcommittee reports, jointed, met today. We went over the budget. We explained to them what we were adding to the budget, that we hadn't lost any staff. We also went over, gave them an update on the superintendent's contract, and we give them an update on the assistant principal search at the Presley Inn. Anything else you want to add to that, Dave? Susan?
How about updating the rest of us on the superintendent assistant search? I mean, the assistant search of the principal.
Three, three final candidates, had a field of about 30, had three final candidates that the committee is forwarding to me, and we're going to spend another couple of hours in the district next week, and we'll take a decision right after.
Any internal?
No. There were internal candidates in the initial pool that were interviewed.
But the three are all external.
The three are all external.
Okay.
One of the things that Susan shared with us that we noted, that kind of similar to the superintendent search process, candidates have different skill sets, different experiences coming in pretty broadly. So, that's, we're seeing the same thing here at, you know, the administrative level, with people coming in with really interesting backgrounds.
Finance, Mr. Cole? Next meeting's going to be May 23.
Policy hasn't announced, no?
Yeah, we met last Saturday, and you will be receiving in the mail sometime this week, seven, well, you got that, you liked that.
Probably.
That's right, we got ours on Saturday.
Thank you.
And that is the, I wouldn't like to, at the policy committee, I thank Susan for her perseverance and her tolerance and her putting in many Saturday mornings to help make this happen. We're very excited that you do it, and your hands. And last Saturday, we already began marking it up and making changes to it. So, that is what we will be getting.
Well, because it ends in 18, so we've got to start a little bit.
Our hope is that now what we can do is we can meet, maybe once a quarter, to review everything that comes up. If there's something urgent, we will need to cover that contingency, whatever it might be. But meet quarterly, just to do the cleanup from everything we receive from the state and from MASK, and make sure that we're up to date. And then every five years or so, we would then take the process of just doing the quick group through the whole book to make sure we're up to date. We're not holding on to policies that make no sense anymore.
I will be taking this in meeting with the leadership team, and they will have go through it with the leadership team as well, and we will have one document for the administrators to follow, for the school committee to follow, for the superintendent.
Sounds great. Wonderful. I just can't thank all of you enough for the work. I know how hard this was, and the amount of labor that went into this. And, you know, it's something we've been talking about for many, many years in terms of getting this updated, and I just, I thank each, each of you who were part of this process.
The biggest victory was first getting ourselves off of carbon. And then, and then the time to bring all of it together, I think, was time well invested. I think we all certainly learned a lot about how this started, rather than what, really, I think we've got a very good idea within our own school committee of what needs to happen. Where we do get challenged is in this stuff that's written over the wall from Desi bringing up. Oh, it needs to be with this wording. You know, we've done a lot of work to effect. One of the policies you will be receiving this week, I'm particularly proud of Brian and Steve and I came up with a policy that I believe is 13 words long.
Versus like three paragraphs.
13 words.
Yeah, and it was what, it was about four pages from that.
Lisa, that was huge.
And it's on?
That particular policy is on crowdfunding. And basically, we say, if any teacher or staffer wants to do crowdfunding on behalf of the schools, they need to clear with the superintendent. The superintendent's prerogative to take care of. So, beyond that, you will also receive a policy on meal, charging for meals and keeping account balances for food services. You will receive four policies, which have already been approved but now are updated to include, these are all discrimination-type of policies and anti-discrimination-type policies, and we need to include pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions as a protected class. So, that is all going, those are all changes to the policies that you've already approved. And finally, that represents about four of them. And then finally, you will be receiving, the section, section J, which is student handbook-type of material, has been modified, the policy on alcohol and substance abuse has been modified to include verbal screening, that we also have included in a prior policy that you've already approved, which was in curriculum and instruction. It's a policy on verbal screening, how we do it and why we do it. It basically just makes the two, the student-facing policy and our own teaching policy be consistent. So, that's what you'll be receiving in the mail sometime this week. We were hoping to get it done today, but we missed it by this much.
Pregnant women weren't a protected class of people until recently?
What's that?
Pregnant women were not a protected?
If they, if they were, we didn't have it in the policy.
Include students, too.
We have included it now in the policy.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to say thank you. Steve might have caught the tail end of this, but when I first got here, we completely went over to carve a rise, all of our policies. And the two things that I really remember were that, when I got handed my policy handbook, it was over 700 pages long. And I remember going through policies and replacing policies that hadn't been updated since 1947. So, they just kept adding policies and adding and adding and adding.
That is a danger now, and so one of the things that I think we need to, you know, I would certainly keep in mind as a, as a policy, as a policy mark for the committee is that any time the superintendent comes to us with a new policy, we have to say, okay, where does it fit? Is it already there? Is it already covered? Do we need to have a whole new policy, or can we just modify another policy that we already have to keep it, keep it short and keep it simple? The indexing that we have within that manual may seem a little odd to you with all the letters and the alphabet strings that we have for each policy, but it does allow us to keep subjects together and to be consistent with not only what MASK is doing, but also at the national level. This is a practice that has been put together by the National School Board Association, so it is consistent. If we want to know what are they doing in California about athletic scholarships, we would be able to use our own policies, and we would be consistent in terms of being able identified with them. Is there an electronic version of this that could be put on the? It's online.
It's online.
It's already online. Is it searchable? So, if somebody wanted to go and say "outlaw" instead of flipping through this many pages of a PDF? It should be searchable. And the way Kathy has been adding it in, she's been breaking down the sections that I've been sending here, and she's been breaking them down policy by policy. So, I haven't looked at the one online, but all of the, all of the indexes are, you can go from the table of content page, click on any one of the things that you dropped into the policy.
We periodically get calls from parents that are looking for a particular policy. Kathy will walk them right to where they need to go.
Thank you, Nick CIE. Not coming, right?
No, we just, didn't we, last week?
Yes, I wasn't there, though, so if you two wanted to.
Hey, you look at me funny, you were there, Bruce.
I had some travel.
You led the meeting, buddy. I'll remind you of that.
I've had too many meetings, so I defer to you, Dave.
We talked about an upcoming homework review discussion, and how do we get, central offices have a plan to get wide variety of opinions and experiences with homework to figure out where we are and what's happening across the district from teachers, students, and parents. We talked about the ways of defining homework, the different roles homework can play, and the role homework could probably play in the bigger discussion of curriculum reviews. We also talked about languages, right? And if we were ever going to do so, how to transition from offering certain languages in high school to other languages, if that's something we decided to do at some point, because there are kids going to be caught in the middle somewhere.
And where we sort of landed on that, as I recall, was that we've done these sort of conversations before as part of ad hoc groups, but we've got to come up with a process to really have that conversation. We don't really have one to take the next step about, about what do we want to do with our language, what's, you know, we know we want to, we know we want to add, we want to make it very robust, but we have to create a process that's going to allow us to really examine that and have a conversation about that, you know, which is probably going to get put on Sean's plate. And superintendent evaluation has not met, although I will say that Sean did get a copy of our, our last iteration of superintendent evaluation, something he was really interested in, the conversation we had with him. So, I have to say, I think he was pleased that the way we've modeled our evaluation process is really consistent from the teachers right on up to the superintendent. If nobody has anything to add, I'll have to entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will not be going into executive session.
So will you.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Prepare adjournments.
What?
Eleven. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, Kelly.